To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
I understand Director Ashka is excused this evening.
That's correct. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes three zero. Item number two, recognition of staff, students, and community. Two A, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award, International Longshoreman and Warehouse Union, number twenty-three. Are we looking for?
Good evening. Good evening, directors. Deputy Superintendent Garcia, my name is Amanda Scott, and I am representing the Tacoma Public Schools Community Partnership Office, and we are here to award the Gold Star Community a Partner Award. Just a little background, this definition of partnership was created with our community. For Tacoma Public Schools, we define partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting academic, student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student's success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. For your consideration, for fifteen years now, the International Longshoreman and Warehouse Union, number twenty-three of Tacoma, has provided $200 gift certificates grocery at a department store to be given to one student per elementary school in need. The criteria for students selected by school staff is a positive attitude, getting along well with classmates, and students who work hard in school and would greatly benefit from the gift. Mr. Dragon Budarock and Dana Brock of the Longshoremen's Union hand-delivered the gift certificates every year like clockwork to the Community Partnership Office to manage the distribution. The Christmas gift cards were distributed this year to fifty Tacoma Public Schools totaling $10,000. Established in 1958, the International Longshoreman and Warehouse Union, number twenty-three, have a long history of supporting kids and families of the community to help make Tacoma a better place to work, live, and learn. Tonight, we honor them and award them the TPS Gold Star Community Partner Award and thank them for their partnership. The director, I as the director would like to recommend that the Board of Directors recognize the Longshoreman and Warehouse Union, number twenty-three, as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award. And at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Budarock or Dana come up and accept the award. You have something to say? Dana?
Wow, thank you so much for that wonderful introduction. You've really done your research. Dragon and I, well, he invented this program, and he's passed it on to me, and I'm blessed for that. I'm so excited, and we are so honored, to get to be a part, to participate in our community, and to watch these kids. You know, they are our future generations, our future leaders, and we're just honored to get to participate. Thank you so much for this award. It really means a lot to us. Dragon?
And I would like to thank the Tacoma School District, through the superintendents, and everybody involved, starting with Patty Holger when we brought this thing together up there in the offices, trying to figure out how to do this, get this to the kids out there. And right from the get-go, it started working out really well. We've had a few little bumpy rides, a lot of families moving out because of the situation of their needs and whatnot, and catching them up after the holidays, and then we get to a bulletproof way of hand pass, hand pass, no ifs, ands, or buts. And now, it's off with the old and in with the new. She's taken over, and she's got other plans, too. Thank you very much for letting us participate throughout the history of Tacoma. Thank you.
Thank you, and would you both please come up so we can express our thanks?
And we did have a family that wanted to come in and say thank you, and I don't know if they made it into the building. Is there a family that received the award and wanted to say something? Okay, they didn't make it in. Thank you.
Item two B, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award, Peace Community Center.
All right, and we're doing two awards tonight because we had one in December, and this is actually our, the Longshoreman was the December recipient, and for the month of January, due to the holidays, we're doing two. So for the month of January, we want, under your consideration, Peace Community Center, which was incorporated in 1996, established through a vision of peace Lutheran church, a diverse neighborhood church, multi-ethnic, multi-generational, serving the Hilltop community for over 100 years. Peace Community Center is committed to ensuring the students they serve graduate high school, ready to succeed in college, and reach their full potential. An organization with sixteen ongoing staff members, fifteen service team members, and over 300 volunteers run programs such as the Hilltop Scholars Program that works with students the summer before they start sixth grade through the completion of a post-secondary degree. During 2013, 2014, Peace served 349 scholars, which include 128 students in elementary school, 95 middle school students, 75 high school students, and 51 post-secondary students. During the current school year, the center projects to serve 375 students, 100 of which are elementary, 140 middle, 140 middle school students, 75 high school students, and 60 students in post-secondary. Peace Community Center is an important partner, offering out-of-school time educational support to Hilltop children and youth. They serve as a model expanded learning opportunity, connecting students, their families, schools, in support of enrichment and academic success. It is with the TPS Gold Star Community Partner Award that we honor and thank Peace Community Center for producing results that matter for our students, families, and the Tacoma community. It's my recommendation that the Board of Directors recognize Peace Community Center as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award. At this time, I'm going to have the Executive Director, Bill Hannawalt, to come up and accept the reward, the award.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, school board members. Thank you, Dr. Santorno and Dr. Garcia. It's, it's an honor to be in partnership with, with you all and with our community in serving Tacoma students. It is challenging. It causes us all to lose some sleep at times, but it is a privilege. And I appreciate the, the kind words and, and the different things that we're doing, and yet, we also know we have a long way to go. And that is, is us together. So, tonight, we have at least three community tutors. Sally likes to call them the heirloom tutors, but Sally, Luke, and Phil, who have tutored with our high school students for a number of years. I also want to thank Ms. Christie Brant, the principal of Jason Lee, and also Janet Cortez Gomez, who's on her way from, from McCarver. Or is she here? Oh, there you are. Great to have you. We partner very closely with McCarver and with Jason Lee, and that is a relationship that only happens with, with the effort of, of principals who work incredibly hard as it is, and, and have to work a little bit harder even to work with community partners. And we're just so thankful for the effort and the partnership that we have together in serving students from the Hilltop community, and we want to thank principals and, and the, that they really represent their staffs, at McCarver and Jason Lee, who are working with us. One small side note, and then I'll do my walk, is one of the things we're proud of, we're very proud of our students, but I'd also note that we have a AmeriCorps service team, of which now, seven of our alums are Tacoma Public School teachers. So we have one at Foss High School, three at Jason Lee, and three at Science and Math Institute. So that's another thing that we're very proud of. So, thank you.
Bill, would you and your three tutors please come up so we can express our appreciation? All right, item two C, recognition of Pathway Pilot Project partnership.
Yes, President Heinz and members of the board, figuring out innovative ways to help our students accelerate their learning and achieve greater heights takes a lot of help from our community partners. As we've already heard here tonight, when we join forces, we create powerful outcomes for kids, and that's true for the new Pathway Pilot Project. The Tacoma Public Library and the school district have collaborated to give about 15,000 of our middle and high school students increased access to the city's public libraries simply by allowing students to use their student identification cards to check out books and use library research tools. To give you more details on the project, its genesis, and the smart people behind the partnership, I'd like to introduce Merrily Tambura, Coordinator for the District's Community Partnership Office, and Sarah Holloway, Teen Services Coordinating Librarian for the Tacoma Public Library.
Good evening, good evening. Again, my name is Merrily Tambura with the Community Partnership Office, and as Dan mentioned, this is a very powerful relationship, partnership that we have built with Tacoma Public Library, and it's taken many external and internal partnerships to get this up and running. And we're going to recognize about 15 people tonight, so we're going to do that quickly. But before we do that, Sarah Holloway, the Teen Services Manager, is going to give a brief history of the Pathway Project.
Thank you. On January 12th, 2015, a young man walked into the Tacoma Public Library to apply for a library card, and he didn't have the right documents, but he did have a student ID, and that is all he needed. That young man walked out with five books because on January 12th, public library access expanded to 15,000 Tacoma Public School students through the Pathway Project. But getting there wasn't easy. Public libraries and public schools have a lot in common. We both create lifelong learners, but as complex organizations, sometimes we struggle to work together. Almost a year and a half ago, the seeds were planted to improve and create a partnership. Judy Chichinsky, who represented the school district's teacher librarians and myself, met to discuss how we could work together, and Maria Shackles, the children's librarian, soon joined us. We brainstormed about ways we could partner. We wishfully discussed a working library card for every student, but we thought that wouldn't fly, so we pared our dreams down to providing students simplified access to online materials and asked our superiors if we could try it. And they said yes. Awesome, it was approved. But then a funny thing happened. Susan Odenkrantz and Carla Santorno met, and they said, no, this isn't good enough. We need to go big or go home. And so we went big. Together, Maria Shackles, Judy Chichinsky, Merrily Tambura, the Community Partnership Coordinator, Christine Bassett, Tacoma Library's IT Manager, whose technical expertise totally made this possible, Susan Odenkrantz and Carla Santorno, who never gave up on this project, we all worked together very hard over almost a year. But soon, we had a great partnership ready to launch. Thankfully, the school board and the Tacoma Public Library trustees were eager to give our organizations the chance to take the path less traveled and try something truly groundbreaking. It was worth every bit of the effort, as last week's students, who had never been to a public library in some cases, begin using their student ID to check out books for the very first time. Thank you. Thank you to everyone involved for making this truly epic partnership a reality.
Thank you, Sarah. Now I'm going to start announcing people to come on up. All of these people have something in common. They're experts at what they do, they have tons of drive, and they've made it their personal mission to help Tacoma students succeed. It's been a pleasure to work with all of them. So, as I call your name, please come on up. We're going to line up along the rail here for a photo op afterwards. So we already have Sarah Holloway here, Judy Chichinsky, please come on up. She's the current First Creek Librarian, and she's one of the masterminds behind the pilot project, or the Pathway Project, Maria Shackles. We wanted to also recognize Carla Santorno tonight for her giving this the thumbs up. Susan Odenkrantz, the Library Director. Tacoma Public Library Board of Trustees for their generous support and approval of the project. President Lillian Hunter, Vice President Jack Conley Jr., John Wallace, Wayne Williams, and is Julio here? I believe he wasn't able to make it. Sandra Jacobson, the Director of Student Information Services, for her leadership and oversight of data transfer from the district to the library. Margie Van Dyke, Gray Middle School Librarian. She was part of the librarian team that facilitated the trainings and overview of the program at school libraries. Felipe here. Felipe Mendez, our Deputy General Counsel, who assisted with the MOU between the library and the district. And Amanda Scott Thomas, whose ongoing support, enthusiasm, expertise, and problem-solving is always greatly appreciated.
And would you all please come up so that the board can express their appreciation? Sure, Director Winskill has a comment.
I just want to tell board members and audience that I actually brought Carla to the library like two years ago, and we looked at all that they had to offer. And one of the things I don't think a lot of people know is that they have SAT prep and ACT prep on their computers, and homework hotline, they have a lot of really good programs for students, so I'm really excited about it, about this partnership.
Thank you.
President Heinz and members of the board, our organization spends so much time and energy relentlessly doing the hard work to make education better for kids, that we, we don't often enough take the time to thank all of you on the board for your guidance and volunteer service. Well, Governor Jay Inslee gave us a little kick in the rear recently. He issued a proclamation proclaiming January as School Board Recognition Month, and tonight we have a few local VIPs, friends of Tacoma Public Schools, who have some special words of gratitude for you. They'll come up one by one to introduce themselves to you, but I'll kick things off by welcoming the President of the Ben B. Chaney Foundation and Treasurer of the Board of the Foundation for Tacoma Students, Mr. Brad Chaney.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having me. As Dan said, I'm a community volunteer. I'm also a board member and treasurer of the Foundation for Tacoma Students, and very proud to be that, in that position. I really want to say briefly, and there's other folks that are going to speak, I want to thank the school board for the work and collaboration you guys have done with this new schools foundation. Your support, most importantly, your alignment, your leadership, and I think another big word is transparency, as we work with you to make this really the best school district in the state, if not beyond. I often have a dream, as growing up here, is that people moved to Tacoma because of the school system, and I think we're on that way. So, I'm very proud to say I grew up here, and, and that's what my hope is and my work behind the foundation is. I also want to recognize an early board member in Debbie Winskill. She has shown leadership and was on this board before I was, so Debbie, thank you for your leadership and your hard work and being here and being in our board meetings. It makes a difference.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Josh, who's in front of me, and Carla, have been just fantastic. So thank you, Josh, and Carla's not here this evening, but you guys have been truly, truly exceptional to work with. And lastly, we have a community report that's coming up on February 12th, Star Center at 8:00 AM, and we'd love to invite all of you to see how things are going. So, thanks again for having me. Donna from United Way is next. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. I'm Donna Ponapinto, and I'm the President and CEO of United Way of Pierce County, and first, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you how important our partnership is with Tacoma Public School District and your support for, over the years. And also, too, great thank you to Josh and to Carla. Carla sits on our Board of Directors and has been such a tremendous help in helping guide us as, as a staff team and as a, as a board in terms of our direction, and what are those things that we could do better as a United Way, and how can we be, create a deeper partnership with this, with the school district. First and foremost, United Way believes that the best way to create a thriving community is by making an early investment in our children and families, and so we're focused on removing those barriers. How do we, as United Way, work with the school district to remove those barriers in breaking the cycle of poverty? And at United Way, we have a term called "Live United," and that is because we can't do it alone. We can't do any of this work alone, and I've only been in Pierce County for about a year. And just in that year, seeing the caring power that happens in this community when people come together and say, you know what, we really care about our kids, and we want to make sure our children are successful, and we want to make sure that they're in families, too, that are strong and stable. And to me, there's nothing more magical when that happens, and I certainly see that with our partnership with the, with the school district. So with United Way, some of the things that we're doing, and we're excited to, to continue to think about other ways that we can work with the district, is we're co-leading with TPS and other partners in the Building Connections Project. We're co-leading with the Campaign for Grade Level Reading with the Foundation for Tacoma Students. And then, one of the things that we're doing, and Josh and I spoke briefly about this about a week ago, is we're looking at how we can coordinate better critical community supports for families to help them be stable and be able to parent their young children. So we're currently working on a plan to create what we're calling a Family Opportunity Center that would be located in the Willard Early Learning Center. So in addition to that, we invest in partner organizations with the school district, and one such program is Ready, Set, Read, that in fact, I'm a volunteer for at the Children's Museum. I spend time reading to students. So, with all of that said, I just look forward to continuing ways to deepen our partnership because great things do happen when we live united. Thank you very much.
Next is Tanya Andrews with the Children's Museum.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come honor your work, and thank you for the time that you volunteer on the school board. My name is Tanya Andrews, and I'm the Director of the Children's Museum, and I just want to take a moment to thank you for expanding Tacoma Public Schools' vision to so robustly include our youngest learners. Thank you for encouraging and supporting the members of your leadership team to be bold and to play a little bit more with some of the collective impact initiatives that are happening in our community, and to dream a bit with their community partners. The Children's Museum and early learning community were thrilled that last year Tacoma Public Schools was represented on the pivotal and perhaps community-changing trip that 14 Tacoma citizens took to Reggio Emilia, Italy, where we spent a week learning about probably the best preschool system on earth. Direct results have been Tacoma Public Schools partnering with the Children's Museum on last fall's symposium on our youngest citizens, at which Josh was a keynote speaker, a training for all pre-K teachers by renowned early learning professor Ben Mardell from Harvard's Project Zero, and I'm pleased to announce that next week, we will launch a Play to Learn site, which is the Children's Museum's school readiness program at the Willard Early Learning Center. That'll be free for all the families that live in that neighborhood. What's downstream of successful graduation rates is quality starts in life for all of our children, and we see TPS as a crucial partner in that work. Again, thank you for allowing us to so meaningfully play together. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron McMahon, and I'd first like to thank Dan Vopel for including me in a VIP of Tacoma. I've never got that recognition, so appreciate that. I'm going to work with the YMCA, I'm the Senior Vice President of Collaborations and Advancement, and also a proud parent of two Tacoma Public Schools graduates, so really, thank you for, from, for the school district for that. But in my role, I work in 11 of the 16 school districts across Pierce and Kitsap Counties. And if you don't know, every single district is completely different. And so, what I can tell you is that in Tacoma, there's a, there's a sense of innovation, of collaboration, and most importantly, a focus on the students, and, and we all know that the culture comes from the leadership. And so, I really do appreciate the, the leadership that is here because I know that that, that comes from the top. At the Y, we also have this saying that we, we want every child to be able to have the opportunity to reach their full potential. And we know that we can do that only by locking arms with everybody, you know, with the school district and all the other agencies in, in the room here today and, and throughout the city. And one thing that we've been working, that the Y has been focused on, along with the school district, is really where we can help is in the social and emotional needs that kids need to be ready to learn, and that is where we, we can, we can work together and be more than we could individually. And we've seen some great results. We know that attendance is up, we know that behavior is down, and we know that the GPA is, is rising because of some of that work. And we know that because we're sharing data, which is something that we have never done before. And so I, I guess, all of that is, is, is a tribute to the leadership and to the senior staff and your faith in them to help us make a, a bigger difference in the community and for our kids. And so, again, just want to say thank you for what we have done, and, and like many, I'm very looking forward to what we're going to be able to do in the future. So thank you.
I'm John Hickey with University of Puget Sound. I'm our Executive Director of Community Engagement, and just want to thank you, I don't get a chance to work directly with the board members a lot, although I've known Karen since I was running around terrorizing the neighborhood in which we grew up. But, I worked with Josh, with Carla, multiple other people in the district, and they are a reflection of what you've accomplished. Great partners. Great partners. Matter of fact, the first meeting I had with Josh, I went there because University of Puget Sound, we've had long-term, multiple kinds of working partnerships, and I really went to meet with Josh to review him strategically to go, does this stuff make sense? What else should we be doing? First words out of Josh's mouth were, what can we do for you? And that's a true partnership where you're looking out for each other and helping each other be successful. So, we just really look forward to that continued work. And now that you're doing such an awesome job of producing these bright, young people in ever-increasing numbers every year, we in higher education got to get our act together. So, we're prepared to take them on and then get them out to those careers where our kids in Tacoma and Pierce County can be all they can be. So, we've got some more work we're doing with all of our higher ed institutions within Pierce County collectively, and we've got some ongoing work to do with you and others to try to right-match those young people with the right kind of additional education they're seeking. So, I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us together, so just looking forward to it. And thanks for your great leadership, and again, it's reflected in the people that are employed here in the district. Anyway, thanks.
Hello, I'm Lynette Buffington with the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm the Membership Outreach Manager, also Stadium Class of 1992. And I also appreciate that on the record, I am a VIP. I've behaved like it for the better part of my life, so it's on the record. In my current role, working with our communities, businesses, and in my earlier career as a Tacoma Schools teacher, I know the value of connecting K-12 education with the business community and with employers. Thank you for your commitment to innovating partnerships, including the one with the Chamber and the Young Entrepreneurs Academy, and your courageous leadership in ensuring that more students graduate and gain a degree or a career credential. You are in fact making Tacoma a more prosperous community. Thank you.
Board of Directors, I'm humbled to be in the same crowd with these great citizens. In the fall of 2011, you started together as a team, and you've never looked back. The accolades that you heard tonight were because you've given people permission, the staff, the community, with the expectation that we will partner, that we will be a contributing member to the citizens. That is a gift for us as staff members. That gives us permission to work with the most talented group of citizens, business leaders, and homeowners in the greatest city in the nation, and we're extremely thankful for that. Your relentless efforts have removed barriers for students and have produced outcomes. And you have been crystal clear that we won't do it alone, and you have publicly recognized the efforts of all of these great folks. And I joke and tell people all the time that working together in Tacoma is not a new concept. It's been happening for years. What's exciting is it's like being on, add a little gas to the fire. And the work that the foundation and the alignment, that everyone is working together, moving in the same direction and placing the child at the center of that, and working for every student every day, is a true recognition and attribute to your leadership. So, on behalf of the 200-plus thousand citizens of Tacoma and the 29,000-plus students and all of our staff and cabinet members and the superintendent, we'd like to recognize your countless hours, your blood, sweat, and tears, and your commitment to putting the child at the center of every decision. Thank you for your leadership. We have a small token of a pen for each of you. And I will be coming around and delivering that, as well as the certificate. So, if you guys could please join me in a round of applause recognizing your skill of work.
Thank you to all of our community partners for coming out tonight and giving us a little bit of your time. And at this point, I think it's time to get back to the work.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Any of my colleagues on the board, would you like to say anything?
I'll just say thank you for coming. That was very nice of people in the community to recognize us, and I think we do work hard and we do work together and we do make good decisions for kids. So, thanks for coming.
Vice President, y'all.
I just want to say it's been a real privilege to serve with my colleagues here on the board and with our community partners because, you know, Tacoma is an example of collaboration, and we do work together. I think we can think where we were back in the fall of 2011 and where we are now. And we still have a lot of work to do, but it has been a real honor and privilege to be on this board and to serve the citizens of the city of Tacoma and the city of Hurcrust and part of the city of University Place. Thank you.
And I would just add, I mean, that truly was a VIP list, and so, it's very humbling to have that sort of expression directed towards us. I think this board has been unified from day one about where we wanted to go in that absolutely included community partnerships. We knew we couldn't get there alone. And on a personal note, a fifth grader, a second grader, and a first grader, so my kids are direct beneficiaries of all of the hard work within the district and within the community. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. So, we will move on. Item number three, members of the public wishing to address the board. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Is there one right there?
Nope. All right, there's none, so we'll move on to item number four, Superintendent's Report.
I have a quick, brief report on behalf of the superintendent. One of the superintendent's goals is transparency, and one of your commitments is that the data is transparent and clear, and we have been working hard to do that. But most recently, it's been brought to our attention that we made an error in one of our, two of our presentations. We did. And what's exciting about it is our community member caught it, and we're very thankful for that. So, I'd like to acknowledge that there was data presented both at the November 13th and December 11th board meetings that had a problem with third grade reading and fifth grade reading data. And it's specifically in the presentations that we presented to the public, and so, we apologize. And it has to do with the number of students meeting standard that were both the same in reading third and fifth grade. The actual slides were number 43 in the November 13th PowerPoint and slide number 26 in the December 11th PowerPoint. Once again, I apologize for the error, and we are working with staff to ensure that this doesn't happen again. The data used in the benchmark webpage remains accurate and the accurate source, and we have since also corrected the presentation and reposted them online so that the community has access to that. If any community member sees any question, that they see question regarding the data or the presentation, we welcome that feedback. You can email me directly, and we truly appreciate having partners that are working with us together to say, let's tell an accurate story, and if there is an error, we will correct it, we will fix it, and we will move on.
All right, thank you. Item number five, consent calendar. And before we vote on the consent calendar, there's a lot of information contained within the consent calendar, and sometimes it may appear as if we just breeze over it, but the board has done its due diligence. We've asked questions. We've thoroughly vetted the information prior to the business meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
I move approval.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Item number six, policy matters.
The Chief Financial Officer recommended that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 1978 and Policy 6214, Commendable Employee Service and Recognition Award Program.
I'll move adoption. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 3-0.
You know, I do have one comment. You know, years ago, when I first got on this board, we used to always recognize those people at a board meeting, and I think it'd really be nice to say the name of the people who are employees of the month and, you know, out loud.
So, we'll add that to our regulation, that's a request.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Agenda item number seven, quarterly financial update. We don't have one this evening, is that correct? Next week. However, it is posted on the district website, and the hyperlink is there.
So, it'll be the next business meeting that we'll have.
February 12th. Okay, thank you. Item number eight, curriculum and instruction.
No report tonight.
Item number nine, business matters. 9A, approval of monitoring services of security system by Sonatrol.
The General Counsel recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of alarm system security monitoring services from Sonatrol of Puget Sound for the district for $367, $449 per year, beginning with the school year 2014-2015.
I'll move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments?
So, I have a kind of a question, comment, basically just looking at the cost because it, there's a cost per school. So, our newer schools are really expensive, and the older schools are very inexpensive. So, how do they determine that? And it would seem like the newer schools would be less prone to break-ins and things like that, so I just found that kind of interesting.
Director Winskill, it relates to the amount of doors and points of entry in buildings and issues that result in Sonatrol monitoring issues. As you know, we have more, security events typically happen at our middle schools and our high schools, which for the most part, our high schools represent our remodeled schools. And so, the costs are established based on the number of points of entry that might result in alarm services and the various areas where we've allowed for key card entry into a building.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, newer buildings are built with the infrastructure to allow for key card entry, whereas our older buildings don't have that same infrastructure, and so, there'd be less opportunities to use key card access for those buildings.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Item 10, other business. 10A, approval of Resolution Number 1980, assignment of teachers out of endorsed areas. First semester 2014-15 report.
The Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 1980, which permits the assignment of teachers to classes other than those in their areas of endorsement for the school year 2014-15.
I'll move adoption. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just really low numbers, four positions, so that's good.
I think that's a true testament to our Human Resources Department, who's worked very hard at, A, recruiting folks to fill those positions, working in partnership with our teachers' union, and then thinking innovatively of how we support folks to reach those highly qualified credentials. Unfortunately, though, we will see that this will become a trend as more and more positions come on board. It's more and more difficult to fill those positions because we will be competing with other school districts, and the criteria to become highly qualified remains, I wouldn't say, I don't want to use the word difficult, but it is a thorough process. And so, and we all know that there are some very good educators, excellent educators, that can serve our kids in various subject areas, but if they don't have the highly qualified credential. And so, we continue to think about being innovative, and as you think about your innovative practices, this will be a conversation that we will continue to have year after year about that balance.
So, I would say, in the old days, you got a K-12 certificate, and you basically could pretty much teach anything. And actually, many people did teach a wide variety of things very successfully. So, you know, even though sometimes people are out of their area, I'm sure they do a really good job.
And I assure you, the Human Resources Team works with the, not only the individual staff member, but the principal to have those conversations because the qualification itself cannot be a barrier to having a high-quality instructor in front of every student every day. And so, we'll continue to work through those opportunities and think innovatively, creatively. You know, Human Resources is partnering with universities to think about different support programs, and this is another example with good intentions at the legislative level, making sure that there's high-quality teachers, but unintentional consequences. And we'll continue to advocate and support policies and procedures that allow us that flexibility.
Vice President, y'all.
There is a bill in the state legislature, in the House of Representatives right now that we were asked to comment on in regards to helping teachers get certifications in areas so that we have, be able to come back and get recertified in areas of our expertise. And we're going to support that bill, and currently is on Charlie Brown, our Governmental Affairs Coordinator's list, to get passed. And I don't think it's going to have too much problems. It doesn't really have a fiscal impact, but it will make it a little bit easier for teachers to get endorsements in other areas other than their first area of teaching. And hopefully, that, Dr. Garcia, might help us with what we're talking about so that people who are qualified to teach will actually have the paper saying that they are. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Item number 11, report to the board, Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, known in the education jargon as Sback.
Thank you, President Hines. And you can see the teams moving away. No one wants to be associated with the topic of Sback anymore. High-stakes testing is a hotspot across the nation. I would like to make a few comments real briefly. We have a team of folks, and tonight's presentation, and it could go under Curriculum Instruction, it could be a variety, it's about the assessments that are being administered at the state level. Many of you have heard that high-stakes testing and the Sback conversation is very much a national conversation right now. We in the Tacoma Public Schools, we believe in assessments. We believe that using data to drive instruction is critical. But, the plan that you're going to see tonight was developed in collaboration with our teachers' union leadership, our principals, our support staff, and it is not to be deemed as a, the sole efforts of the Tacoma Public Schools, but we have to take those federal mandates, those state mandates, and we have to ask ourselves, what makes sense for where we are here in Tacoma Public Schools? We also have the privilege, under your leadership, to work in a multiple-measures accountability system. Our teachers have been working hard on deconstructing the common core standards for years. What is new is the assessment tool, and that, like anything else, needs time and support. And some of the support that is needed is just around the unknown. And so, we may not be able to answer specific questions that you may have because we just don't have the answers because the information is there. And that is not a knock on the state or the Sback Consortium, it's just new. And we will continue to work with our community to help them understand that when they get their third-grader scores back, that this was an example of where they were in March in relation to the end-of-the-year standards. So, in a lot of ways, that's like asking the financial world, here's your end-of-the-year quotas, but we're going to stop halfway through the year, and we're going to hold you accountable to that. We're going to use this assessment as a per-year direction, as a baseline data. We're going to take it seriously. We're going to work hard to make sure that our staff and our students are committed and supported to it, and at the same time, we will work with each school to make sure that their plan is real to where that school is. So, without further ado, I'd like to bring, turn it over to Executive Director Amy Eskevich and Director Cummings to talk to you about the plan as of today.
Good evening, President Hines, members of the board, and Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Garcia. As was mentioned earlier, we're going to give you an update. We're going to do a little bit of recursive messaging, bring you up to speed from your last update from December. We're going to talk about the plan, and we're going to give you a snapshot of kind of where our next steps are. So, joining us in our December meeting, Director Cummings gave an update, and he's going to give a little bit since then, and we're going to move right into where our action steps are, and then I'm going to talk about our next steps.
I talked to you last on December the 11th, and since then, we know a lot more. We did an update, and I was in the middle of the Washington Educational Research Association meeting. Since then, we've had the ability to collaborate with a lot of directors across the state, and sharing information, sharing materials has been very valuable. We've also decided, and I think this was a good decision, to do the paper and pencil testing for our 10th graders. We had the option of doing the online testing, and even though our computer situation is in very, very good shape this year, we just thought that doing thought that doing it in a format that we were familiar with was a better decision, and I think that, that proved to be right. Our, we meet weekly with the technology folks, and our secure browser, which is the, the software that the test is administered, is on almost every computer in the district. It's been deployed with very few problems. The technology is rock-solid, I believe, and it will be very good, very good this year. The, since our meeting two, we know a little bit more about the options of the interim and the comprehensive assessment. There's still things that we don't know, but there's been a few more materials that have come to us, and we've also been distributing this through various meetings with our principals and with our assessment coordinators. In this room, we had over seventy-five people in December that attended informational meetings on our, on the procedures. And finally, the key to all of this from the state is a singular portal. It's called the YCAP portal, and a daily new material is being presented from that portal, and we're consolidating the information and trying to improve where we can, the training and the organization. So we're, we're well on our way, and we're much farther than we were just a little over a month ago.
So, learning what we have in talking to our neighboring districts, and listening to lots of information coming from OSPI through their teaching and learning department, as well as their assessment department, there was lots of things to consider when we sat down to the table to determine what it was that we were going to do for a plan. Fundamentally, looking at having early access and exposure being one of the number-one priorities, rather than going through and just doing assessments for the sake of getting a baseline assessment. So looking at having exposure to lower the levels of anxiety for both staff and students, looking at our technology readiness, and as Director Cummings said, we are in really good shape for when we get to the technology aspects of that, having pushed out over the winter break. Looking at what the available resources from OSPI are, and as quickly as they are working to put it out, they still have limitations in the staff that they have, and so they continue to work forward and fast as they can to get everything out to us. I sat earlier this afternoon, coming, before coming to the meeting this evening, listening to another webinar from the teaching and learning department at OSPI regarding some of the changes that they have coming that were different from a week ago. So, as we are looking at the resources, wanting to make sure that we deploy that as quickly as we can out to buildings, having a systemic approach that supports buildings. So those were our considerations when we sat down to develop the tool, the plan. Taking a systemic approach, really what we ultimately came to agreement is looking at the baseline being the practice test. And I'm going to talk about what the components of the practice tests are in a moment, with the optional activities being, you can choose to be, go above and beyond, and either do the interim assessment blocks, or you can choose to go above and beyond and do the interim comprehensive assessment. But our baseline for which to give exposure and access for all is looking at those practice tests, which include a classroom teaching activity for each grade and subject area, which will be about a thirty to sixty minutes, as well as a performance task, which is computer-based. Again, it's around a sixty-minute, looking at that. That's connected to the activity that is presented through the classroom teaching experience, and in having conversations with our local neighboring districts, that's being done in lots of different ways, and we want to explore options that will meet the needs of individual buildings to see what that will look like for them. So I'm going to talk in a minute about the next steps, and that, I'll include that as well. Following by the online practice test, which has about twenty-eight items on it, and that's about approximately an hour. Included in that is how, the use of the tools, of how to do the highlighting functions and the other parts that are going to be required in the summative tests in the spring. So it's more about getting access and exposure, and less about getting the information back with regards to how our kids are actually going to be performing at the end of the year. Weighing and balancing the practice test with the benefits, I'm not going to read each one of those to you, but there are definitely some benefits and some challenges. And I spoke about one of the challenges a moment ago, and that one of those is not getting the scores back in the same format that we would see if we did the comprehensive assessment. But what we do know is that it will be less stressful for teachers and students, because it's going to be a shorter time period, and it's really going to provide them access to practice the skills when they get to the actual test at the end of the year. I spoke about two options available, one being interim assessment blocks, the IAB, and those are going to be available coming up next week. There was some conversation about whether or not some of the pieces of that was going to be available, but the webinar that, earlier this afternoon, said that they would be coming out at the end of next week. So we are hopeful to, for those schools that may choose to do that, will have access. As indicated on, on the report that you have there, other, the report scores are met by standard only, so as you look at the interim assessment blocks, really, you're looking at the learning targets, and you're looking within there at a specific strand that a student may be looking at. For example, if you're looking at math, you may actually be looking at a fraction portion of math. And so really, you're not getting to details, and so the, the block wouldn't give you enough information around driving the instructional piece. The interim part of that may be a bigger plan, as we roll out what our options might be next year, as we look at the comprehensive results. The other option is looking at doing the full-blown comprehensive assessment. And the full-blown comprehensive assessment is really, it's a total of seven to eight hours, most likely longer than that. Some of the pilot schools reported out that it was more like twelve hours. But you do get those scores back, you get them in composite scale scores, as well as how that equates to the levels in the claims, so the information that you get back is far greater in detail. But that's not available in its full reporting period back yet. And so as you look at the ways and balances of providing a low-stress, easy-access, baseline support to teachers, and turning it around and having the full-blown comprehensive, if we begin that work now, the end of Feb, end of January, and we move it and we begin testing in February to March, our third graders are going to have to turn around and do the comprehensive in its full entirety again. And so those were some considerations when we looked at a baseline of doing the practice versus the comprehensive or the block. So our next steps is, in February, we will begin our assessment coordinator training. So once we have the training manuals in hand, which are not yet fully released, once we have those in hand, we will have our training. Next week, we'll be launching our parent communication on that, fully with all resources, pages, and access, how to access practice tests for students who might want to go on and take a look at that. We're going to collect feedback and schedule a plan to support. So individual buildings will be letting us know which of the additional options, if they choose an additional option, they might be doing, and when their testing schedule will begin, so that we have an opportunity to put a good, solid team together to support them in their efforts. And lastly, when we have got some of those pieces underneath of us, we'll be bringing back another update. It's fluid, and as we're learning more, we're rolling it out to buildings, and we'll be bringing that information back out to you as well. What questions do you have for either of us?
Director Wenskill.
I had just one question. You've decided to do paper and pencil, I understand that, but would it be really complicated to have an option for some students to do it on a computer if they wanted to, or would that really complicate things?
That would complicate things, I think, for that particular, the paper and pencil is like the S-BAC. You know, I haven't really thought through that. I, you know, right now, at the high, at all other grades, our computer inventory is just wonderful. At the high school, we're pushing it a little bit. I think this year, it would have been difficult to do two complete classes with the computers that we have available. I guess the question would be if there was an individual case that they wanted to do it online. I'd, I'd have to check. I think that we probably could do that, but...
Well, I'm just wondering. I mean, I don't want to complicate things, but, but are you anticipating that things would be a little bit different when we do go online? I mean, is the expectation that we go online soon?
Well, we've, we've always been a district that goes online in greater numbers than any other district. And next year, yes, we would, we'll be doing this online. Online is just easier to manage by the teacher, it's more secure, it's, the, the students really don't have difficulty, as long as they've had some preparation, slight preparation beforehand. You know, just at the, at the time when we needed to make the decision, we thought paper and pencil might be a little easier to manage strategically than expecting to have all that, that computer. Let me state one other thing, in our third through eighth grade, we were online all last year, the year before. We've never been online at the high school. This will be the first year that we're doing that, and that was why we thought we'd ease into it with paper and pencil, too.
Okay. Just to add to that, is, is, you, the high school teams had input into this decision. When we talk about we, we, we had meaningful conversations about what else is going on, what make, what do you think your staff's going to feel most comfortable with, what do you think your students are going to feel most comfortable with? We've seen in online versus paper and pencil results, there's variance between the two tools. And there's a, there's a old belief in, in, teaching is, is you don't teach new content, new skill in the same lesson. And so the high school staffs really felt that they also wanted to give our kids the best shot to demonstrate their knowledge of the content, not the skill of navigating through the technology. So as Director Cummings mentioned, the expectation, I believe, for all schools that are part of the S-BAC system, its consortium would be redundant, they will all be online. And so we will move towards that direction, but as we, this, this is not our final plan. This is the plan, and then as we continue to evolve and get the tools online and see what those are, that'll give our staff an opportunity as well. But we will definitely investigate, do we even have the option now that we've made the decision, to see if students can individually select to take the computer? We can find that out, and we'll bring that back to you.
Any more questions, Director Wenskill?
No, that's it, thanks.
Vice President of y'all?
Thank you. I have more of a comment than I do a question. I like the direction of the practice test, and I was around teaching when the WASSL was given the first time in fourth grade. And the paper pencil, I think that a new test is more confusing, as Director, or as Deputy Superintendent Garcia said about teaching skill at the same time you're wanting the kids to do content. Remember, we're, we're dealing with little kids, not adults with college degrees, and I think sometimes we tend to forget that. So I'm very much in favor and supportive of the paper pencil first, so that the kids have the opportunity to really look at the content of the exam and what's really being asked, rather than trying to figure out, did I hit the right key? Did I never, as, as Mr. Cummings pointed out. I applaud the staff for coming up with this recommendation. I think it's going to best serve all of us, and I think some, what it will do, in my opinion, just having watched WASSL and then later the HSP, or MSP when I was in elementary school, is that I think it will relieve some of the stress on our kids with paper pencil first, and they'll be more comfortable looking at content when we go to the computer. That's just my own observations of having spent time out in a classroom and seeing kids actually take these and having to administer. I think it'll be easier for the teachers also not to have to be worried about kids making a mess on the computer, and then trying to figure out, how do we fix that? And mess is not a, obviously a sophisticated word, but for those of us in elementary, they, I'm sure people out there, there can relate. I think we've made a, a very good choice. I guess a question that I have, when the practice test comes back, will that come back with scores, or will it just come back as having met standard?
The practice test is actually a pretty good option for this reason. Some of the colleagues that did the practice test last year actually didn't do the whole practice test in one setting. The teachers will have all the answers to them. It's not a secure test, so it could be done as a lesson. The teacher could have it on the bla, on the whiteboard, and you could stop and discuss. We were working very hard to see if it would, in fact, archive the students' scores. We thought that it would work, but the, at this point in time, it's, it's just, it, it's, it's a way that they can get the content of all the tools, all the highlighting, all the math.
Would I be correct in saying we're going to use it as a teaching tool to introduce the kids to the content of the tests of S-BAC?
Not the con, the, the, not the content of the, the...
The tool.
It's just the tools, right.
The tool.
Right, right.
How questions are being asked, the format of...
That's what I'm after, right.
Absolutely. And the, and I think to your point is, is we will be able to use that, is that, that teaching moment, and that was one of the primary decisions. That's the best option we have for a teaching moment, because the staff really do have an opportunity, knowing what the answers are, to talk through in a whole-class exercise or individually, and, and stop and start, and help them build their confidence with the kids, as well as this is what you know, and this is the things that we need to continue to work on.
Back about ten years ago, that, when the WASSL first came in, we actually had those practice WASSL tests, and then some of the MSP, too, so that we really did stop and go back and discuss and work through the solution of problems, and I think it did help a number of our, of our kids. So anyway, thank you for bringing this before us, and I really support the, the, using the, the practice test first, and I think it will leave, alleviate a lot of stress on the part of not only teachers, but our, not only our students, but also our teachers and the administrators of the tests. Thank you.
Just have a, a question and then a couple of comments. Anecdotally, I've heard the students across the country that have taken the test initially, scores are significantly lower than the other standardized tests. Are, are you hearing that from your colleagues as you learn more about the test?
Yes, they set the, they set the cut scores in Dallas, first of December, and it's approximately, depending upon the grade level, about forty percent pass rate. And I'd like to bring you back fourteen years ago, when we first started with the WASSL. When you look at and compare the pass rates, they're, they're fairly comparable. So the, the theory is that if you set the standard high, that people will eventually reach that higher standard. That was very much the case with the WASSL, the later the MSP. Our, our rates now are, are, you know, much higher. I think that will probably require the public to be aware that, you know, that we pretty much know where the standard is and the percent of students passing, and we don't want that score to shock people, as somehow reflecting that we're doing a poor job. I think it would be more a reflection that as a process of trying to get students to high, high standards, you need to have, you, you need to have these bars set very high.
In addition to what Director Cummings said, I think it's really important that we continually remind folks, especially with our third graders, they're going to take this in the beginning of the March, this year, the end-of-the-year standards. I, I, maybe I'm being naive, but all of March, April, May, and June, that, that's lost instruction time. Kids are not going to have access to certain, teachers are not going to have access to opportunities to teach to some of those standards. And so we have to all remember to encourage, and my advice for families at home, is, is encourage your child to do their best, but that is not a judgment if they're behind or not behind. And then we will look at that data, we will process, and that's where we also go back to report card standards. Talk to your individual class teacher, those report card standards are the same standards measured as on the S-BAC. And, and that should be, that final report card standard should give you good evidence to say, what other supports specifically does my child need? As a city, we have to continue to remind ourselves that we should not be ignoring this, we should do our best, but we also need to put it in perspective of what are the limitations of the data. One of the advantage of the MSPs was, they really pushed those timelines back towards the end of the year, so that gave us more of a, an end-of-the-year standard. And we'll see that, I think, as a trend, as the technology continues to advance.
And I ask that question because I do think that's important for us to begin having the conversation with the community, so that it's not a shock, particularly for Tacoma Public Schools as a multiple-measure district, that folks don't get wrapped around S-BAC scores. I understand Pearson, among others, already has the curriculum we need to improve test scores, and so I would caution against us getting wrapped up in that high-stake standardized test, the S-BAC. If it comes in low, then we get myopically focused on improving S-BAC scores, and we continue our, our whole-child approach using multiple measures. The other comment I had was just on the explanation for using the computer test versus paper and pencil, and I heard a lot of things that were adult-focused, easier to manage, more secure. And I heard a lot of things that were adult-focused, easier to manage, more secure. And so I just remind us that we, uh, have been using successfully that the child, what's, what's in the best interest of the student and I would hope that we continue to operate in that manner where it may be easier to do it online, but if we think it's better for a kid to take it paper and pencil, that that ultimately is, uh, what drives our decisions.
I, I assure you, that was the ultimate focus point and I apologize if that gotten lost and the, the high schools are pretty, and, and Director Cummings has been a leader in helping us see what is the correlation between online and written. And we believe that, at this time, not knowing what the tool will look like, our students will have the best opportunity to demonstrate what they know through the paper and pencil. And that was the deciding factor of that decision.
Okay. Thank you.
One last comment is, is, uh, if you're a parent out there or you're a partner trying to help students, once again, can't encourage folks enough to, to help folks, this, their individual students, uh, take it serious and at the same time, um, help them remain calm. Help them understand that, um, this is not a defining factor, uh, in your life. And the other pieces, the, the practical is, is, one of the biggest changes and challenges kids are gonna see is building their stamina writing. So if you're working with kids right now, encourage them to sit down and write. Write about their day, write for extended periods of time because that's one of the, especially for our young kids, is gonna be one of the most significant challenges is not whether they know it, is, is their focus and stamina of writing and writing and writing. And so, uh, because not even a, all the elementary version is all online, there will still be writing components. Thank you very much, team.
Good job.
All right, item number twelve, board comments. Start with Director Wensko.
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment about, uh, last weekend, I went to, uh, one of the basketball games and Young Ambassadors performed. Uh, Scott, I don't know if you've ever brought your children to that?
We were there, it was the Bellarmine prep game versus stadium.
Oh, yeah. Yes, very exciting and I brought my young grandchildren who all wanna be, uh, part of the Young Ambassadors in the future.
My youngest son was a, a part of Young Ambassadors.
My three grand children were also on that team. But they, they do such a wonderful job, those, um, uh, coaches that, uh, prepare those students, uh, high quality, so.
Okay, thank you. Vice President of y'all.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Uh, just two quick comments. One, I'd like to note that one of our students' representatives, uh, sent me an email saying that it's finals week and her parents had said, stay home, study for finals, she has a test tomorrow, so I think-
We're okay with that.
I think we can be, we can be fine with that. Uh, and the other thing that I wanted to note is that, uh, just yesterday, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, uh, annual winter meeting, uh, the mayors had an audience with U.S. Education Department Secretary Arnie Duncan and, uh, and Secretary Duncan cited McCarver Elementary School as a promising innovative results-based strategy to improving opportunity and addressing achievement gaps in K through twelve ed, uh, education. And, uh, and apparently, he did it off the top of his head when asked the question, so...
Pretty exciting. How did you hear that?
Very exciting. So, so our, uh, government relations folks were in attendance at the U.S. Conference of Mayors and they shared that, that information.
Well, and also Mayor Strickland is on the panel with Secretary Duncan yesterday, so that probably didn't hurt either.
Yeah, that's exciting.
So, uh, kind of, I think, appropriate as we wind down for today, you know, all of the tremendous work that's going on within the district and within the community is not only changing lives in the city of Tacoma, but it has the potential to transform lives across the country. And so I appreciate being a part of this group, a part of this board, a part of this district and community that is, uh, truly leading the way for a, a modern 21st century education system.
If I may, just a, a final few comments, uh, under the umbrella of stamina. Uh, as you look at your agendas, uh, we will be entering spring and it will be, get very busy for us. Uh, and we will need our community's voices. So there's some big topics that are coming and, and we're encouraging folks, uh, to start to be thinking about those. You may or may not know, on the webpage, there's an opportunity for folks to start to provide some initial feedback on the strategic plan. Uh, families were all emailed that. We will be doing a robo-call, if you will, to remind folks that that's an opportunity in sending that out. We send it out to, uh, a broad constituent group of community partners. Uh, we worked with our other partners to encourage people to send that out. Each survey is based on the, the, the specific grouping. So families, uh, parents, they're asked to speak to the strategic plan benchmarks and provide their feedback from that lens. Community partners, based on their lens, and then staff will participate. From there, we will also be doing more extensive outreach, focus groups based on that data, bringing those recommendations similar to that accordion process. So, very much encouraging folks to be thinking about that. I think that if folks were watching your, your leadership from 2011, those decisions really, uh, are a catalyst for the work that we do. In addition to that, um, our Chief Financial Officer will be leading us all through another budgeting for priorities in a two-year budget this year. Uh, that's pretty extensive work. We need you to be thinking about what are those priorities based on our current benchmarks and what are those? We welcome that community feedback. Um, we have community partners that have asked, can I just email you, uh, my comments? And the answer is, yes, you can. Um, in addition to the surveys, if you have thoughts, that we will take that, we will collect that, we will share those informations out. The board will be, uh, going into a work-study next week around innovation and reviewing their innovative, uh, portfolio and thinking about what next steps are for there. Uh, that will cause us to have future meetings and future board topics, uh, so that will not be a one-size-only and then obviously the numerous construction projects and the day-to-day work. All that's under the umbrella is, is that, um, we may have information coming to our community very fast, um, continually reminding folks to try to check the website, not knowing that that's the only way that we will communicate. We will continue to find different ways and mediums to do that. Director Vopel's, uh, social media outlets, we will continue to work with those to spread those messages. And then be prepared that, uh, we may need extra meetings, um, on Thursday nights and other nights. And so if, uh, constantly reminding folks, um, we will send out those reminders, but if you're, if you're, uh, questioned whether or not there's a meeting on a Thursday night, uh, regarding a topic, obviously we will follow our protocols and communicate those to the best of effort. But to explain that, um, things will be coming and we will need time to make meaning of those and make decisions. And so, um, we're excited about this spring. Uh, we're reminding folks under the umbrella that everybody's, uh, it's winter, there's some vicious colds going around, take care of yourself. Uh, we need ya. We need ya during this spring to be, uh, energized and healthy so that we can move to the next step. Thank you.
All right, uh, item number thirteen, announcement of future board meetings. Uh, it's not on the announcement, but I wanted to share that tomorrow in partnership with University of Washington Tacoma, we will be hosting Governor Inslee for a roundtable, uh, highlighting the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. And then on, uh, Wednesday, January 28th, at eight AM here, we'll be in joint session with Metro Parks. On Thursday, January 29th, in this auditorium at six PM, we'll meet for a study session. And our next regularly scheduled business meeting is Thursday, February 12th, at six PM in the auditorium. We have executive session tonight. I see General Counsel shaking her head with that. Meeting is adjourned.